Why don't we go ahead and jump right into this and call the meeting to order? We'll stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal with liberty and justice for all.
So, the record reflects those who are present, I will not call the role. Acting Village Attorney Suarez.
Here.
Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Councilwoman Birch.
Present.
Councilman Melz.
Here.
Councilman Zalkowitz is on his way. Vice Mayor Brady.
Here.
Mayor Glenn.
Present.
You have quorum.
Great. Before we get started tonight, it was brought to my attention that we have the police explorers here yet again, supporting us and helping us get started each meeting, and because they're gone, by the time we get to public comments, they rarely get to hear us thank them, so I wanted to say thank you for coming out again and supporting and appreciate your service and your support of the council and the village. I think before, well, maybe you want to jump into public comments or? Yeah, well, before we get started tonight with public comment, tonight and today is a pretty momentous one. It actually marks the 20-year anniversary of something, and that is the 20-year anniversary of Mr. Tom Benton's service as Village Manager here in Miami Shores. Surprise!
Scott Davis was outside on Tuesday night, so something's up.
So, I've seen firsthand, both as mayor and the year and a half that I spent as councilman beforehand, just how much Tom does for this village and what a terrific job he's done as Village Manager, and how effortlessly it looks that we provide service for our residents, and the amount of effort that makes it, that goes into making it look effortless. And I appreciate what he does, and I don't know if any of the other council members would like to take the opportunity to say something, but we do have something for you tonight on the anniversary, so.
Why don't you go ahead with that?
Okay. Yep, sure. Well, I'm going to go ahead. Tom, if you could come up.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to go ahead and read this into the official record, and it does two things. First of all, it's going to publicly, on the record, acknowledge all the work that Tom has done for the village, but secondly, it's going to really embarrass him. It serves two purposes. So, proclamation on behalf of Miami Shores Village from the Office of the Mayor, Miami Shores Village, Florida, whereas Thomas J. Benton has dedicated more than 40 years of service to the Miami Shores Village community, including holding the position of interim Village Manager from May 1998 to October 98, and whereas Tom was officially appointed as Village Manager on October 6, 1998, and has faithfully served the men and women of the Village Council and the residents of Miami Shores as Village Manager for 20 years, and whereas Tom is currently the longest-standing active city manager in Miami Dade County, and whereas Tom's perseverance to negotiate and administer intricate and exciting projects have added tremendous value to our community, such as the sewer system project, the reconstruction of northeast Second Avenue and Biscayne Boulevard, formation of Doctor's Charter School, the construction of the Aquatic Center, and implementation of traffic lights at northeast 103rd Street and northwest Second Avenue, and whereas as fiscal manager, Tom established austerity measures and innovative solutions which enabled balanced budgets with no planned use of the village's reserves, and whereas Tom's notable success has been due to his keen leadership skills, but also in large measure due to his stellar work ethic and ability to go above and beyond, which he has demonstrated in his support to staff, residents, and the Village Council, in additional, most recently, to the emergency management of Hurricane Wilma and Hurricane Irma, and whereas Miami Shores Village deems it an honor to recognize Tom Benton for his professional accomplishments and 20 years of service as Village Manager. Now therefore be resolved, I am Act Glenn, Mayor of Miami Shores Village, Florida, on behalf of the Village Council and Village Staff, do hereby call upon all of the residents of Miami Shores Village to join me in honoring Tom Benton for his continuous service to the Village Council, Village Staff, and Village Residents.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If I may, it's just, there's a, I certainly appreciate this, let no one say that we can't keep a surprise here because I'm completely shocked here tonight, and I want to say thank you to all of the sitting elected officials tonight, and as I look around the room here, I see folks that I've worked with, Mr. Sastre, Mr. Herrera, Herta Holly, Mr. Lefredo was here, oh, there he is back there, and of course, my staff, this, you know, I didn't do this by myself. I've worked with some really professional people along the way, I've worked with tremendous elected officials who have been very supportive, and I thank you all very much for this, and it's been my honor to work here for this community. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your indulgence on that. With that, we'll go into public comment. If there's any public comment tonight, it's three minutes per speaker. We ask that you give your name and your address into the record when you come up, and we'd love to have you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing, and that is that 20 years ago, on October 6, 1998, it was Mr. Caesar Sastre, who happens to be present in the audience today, who brought the item forth to appoint Mr. Benton as Village Manager, and you know, all of us who get elected want to bring good things forward as agenda items, and I think he's to be commended for having that wisdom to bring that item forward.
Absolutely. Great work.
Takes three votes, though. Good evening. Douglas Barnes, 10108 Northeast 1st Avenue, and I have a proxy for my wife, Mary, who regrets that she can't be here this evening, also 10108 Northeast 1st Avenue, coincidentally. I have a couple of comments regarding the appointments to the boards. I don't know most of the people who have applied for board positions, but I do know three people, and I'm happy to strongly endorse them. For the Planning and Zoning Board, Irene Hegidis and David Snow are, I think, outstanding candidates and have contributed immensely to the board in their time, and I'm delighted to see them reapplying. And for the Arts, Fine Arts Commission, Carol Hoffman, has an outstanding resume and has worked many years in the arts, and I think would be a fine addition to the board. And then finally, I want to just express my support for the resolution that Sean Brady has put forth on the pressing opposition to offshore drilling. I think that's commendable. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Herta Holly, and I live at 9660 Northeast 5th Avenue Road, and I would like to just again compliment Tom. I have sat one of those seats for over 12 years, and I recognize what a marvelous support and help Tom has always been. He made every single person who happens to have been elected to one of those offices look good. He does the work, you take the credit, I certainly took an up on my hands, too, so I just want to say congratulations, Tom, and how happy we are that you are our Village Manager. May you have many more years saving our community, doing your wonderful, wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll drive down from Broward County and gross to you a little bit. If I can indulge the council, my name is Caesar Sastre. I'm a former resident here for many years, was served on the council from 1995 to 1999, and I do, actually, my wife and I cut short a trip from North Carolina, a camping trip, to be here. We wouldn't miss this for anything. You know, councils, when you serve on the council, you certainly don't do it for money, you don't do it for fame, you don't even do it for your next-door neighbor to complain about the garbage not getting picked up on time. We do it because we want to see this community get to the next level. We do it because we want to see this community not just stay well, but keep growing and getting better. And mayors, and I look here, I see a great host of mayors and council members we've had, but we all come and go. The anchor, though, is the city manager. So, in 1998, when we appointed Tom, in my opinion, and I was only one of three votes, Steve Lefredo, and Mary Rosigusta, and also the mayor at the time, Lilim Burja, we voted Tom in, and I knew, I didn't know I'd be here 20 years later, but I knew that this would be a long-term appointment and that Tom would make us all proud in many ways. You know, when I come back here to visit my dad, who still lives in the area, I think about the three biggest things that I was involved in, and again, it takes three votes, but one was the pool. I drive by that swimming pool, that Aquatic Center, and you know, there is a sense of pride knowing that, you know, I was a part of that. I drive by our beautiful police department, I remember when we first purchased it and did the renovation work, and that was quite a job, but it's a beautiful building. I see our beautiful library here. There's so many amazing things that Miami Shores has to offer. And then, of course, the third and most important thing is having a good Village Manager, and I'm just proud to be a part of that vote, I'm proud that I've supported Tom, and it's good to see you all on the council and keeping this machine going in the right direction and doing well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Brady. I live at 1080 Northeast 95th Street, and I'm here tonight to encourage you to pass the resolution regarding enrolling in the Age Friendly Initiative for Miami Dade County. The resolution is being sponsored by Councilman Birch, and we have talked extensively what we want to do. I've distributed each of you some information about the Age Friendly Initiative and have some very, very brief and short remarks. The Miami Dade Age Friendly Initiative is a collaborative effort focusing on substantial change in order to create a community where older adults of all ages can stay active, engaged, healthy, with dignity and enjoyment. And even though Miami Shores does not have a large, over 65 population, when you look at the demography of Miami Shores, what you see is a very large cohort of people between 55 and 65 who will be aging into becoming older adults, and provides us with an opportunity to do things that we may need to do over the next several years to make their life more pleasant and acceptable. It's a countywide effort, led by AARP of Florida, the Alliance for Aging, the Health Foundation of South Florida, Miami Dade County, the Miami Dade Transportation Planning Organization, United Way of Dade County, and the Urban Health Partnership. A number of communities in Miami Dade have moved forward with adopting or joining in the Age Friendly Initiative. Coral Gables, Cutler Bay, the City of Miami, Miami Dade County, Miami Lakes, Palmetto Bay, and Pinecrest. There is a cycle in the Age Friendly Initiative. There's enrollment, which hopefully we're going to embark on tonight. There's a planning process that takes one to two years. There's an implementation project that takes three to five years, and then there's a continuous cycle of improvement to set goals and measure how well we meet them. Tonight, this council takes the first step. In many regards, as you move forward with addressing issues with climate change, this is an effort to move forward with addressing one of the other great challenges that this country will have over the next 15 to 20 years. The council passes a resolution that approves the village's enrollment process. A process that will make Miami Shores a better place for all of its residents, one which treasures its older adults, allowing them to work and live fully and at home in this community. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Ready? Anybody in the audience want to see?
Start?
Yes, please.
My name is Catherine Uden, and I am the South Florida Campaign Organizer for Oceano, which protects the world's oceans. Thank you for placing the resolution for offshore drilling on the agenda. The first step in offshore drilling in the Atlantic would be seismic permits, and seismic airgun blasting is how they find oil under the ocean floor. Seismic airguns release pressurized air blasts that are like underwater explosions. These loud blasts are repeated every 10 to 12 seconds for days, weeks, or months at a time. Seismic airgun sounds can be heard up to 2,500 miles from the source. Marine animals are sensitive to sound. The sound has impacts on fish, shellfish, whales, dolphins, sea turtles, even zoo plankton. Our current administration's plan proposes leases in most US waters and along the Atlantic coast from Cape Canaveral to Cape May, New Jersey. This plan ignores expansive opposition, threats to coastal communities, dangers to marine life, and past disasters. As we all know, oil spills and tourism don't mix. Oil spills also do not respect state lines. Fishing, tourism, and recreation supports nearly 610,000 jobs on Florida's coast alone and generates roughly $37.4 billion in GDP in Florida. The BP Deepwater Horizon oil disaster resulted in more than 200 million gallons of oil spilling into the Gulf of Mexico, resulted in 11 human losses, health impacts, and harm to the environment and marine animals. Opposition against offshore drilling has been expressed by every east and west coast governor, except one, our military, scientists, and to date, over 300 municipalities. There is incredible bipartisan opposition. As the world moves towards clean energy and away from dirty fossil fuels and carbon emissions, creating more offshore oil rigs simply does not make sense, and it's not necessary. Our administration has also just announced plans to reverse safety rules for oil rigs, which will make it even more risky. Abundant ocean resources and beautiful beaches bring in consistent revenue year after year, while oil and gas are finite resources. We've seen in the media lately the impact of red tide and toxic algae on our economy, our wildlife, home values, and on our quality of life. Ocean is requesting your support for a clean coast economy, living oceans, and beautiful beaches, and all of this information can be found at StopTheDrill.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Brad Smith. I live at 46 Northwest 105th Street. I come before you because I'm running for the Fine Arts Commission. I'm doing so because at a young age, I was-
Hold on one second, and I should have explained this beforehand, and this is your first time, and this is my fault. Actually, we are going to give everybody the opportunity to speak when we get to the appointment round for that particular board, and that, I appreciate your initiative, but we're going to, we're going to hold on tight until we're done with general public comments, and then we'll go into specific public comments about appointments. So, are there any more general public comments? Okay, great. With that, I think we can move on.
Item 5, Consent Agenda. Items are routine, self-explanatory matters and are not expected to require discussion or review. Items will be enacted by one motion if discussion is desired by any member of the council. That item must be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If the public wishes to speak on a matter on the consent agenda, they must inform the village clerk prior to the start of the meeting. They will be recognized to speak prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Item 5A, Approval of the October 2, 2018 Village Council Meeting Minutes. Item 5B, Approval of the Two Qualified Firms for the Library Expansion Project, Stop's Brothers Construction Company and the State Contracting and Engineering Corp. to advance to the next stage of the competitive solicitation process. Mr. Mayor, I have not received any requests from the public to have any of the items pulled.
Okay, great. Council, do I have a motion to move forward with the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the items on consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, great.
Item 6A, Appointments to the Planning and Zoning Board. There are two vacancies. Applicants who are appointed to this board will serve a term of two years. The council has received the applications and also supplemental documentation that's included in your agenda packet. I will call each member to, or each applicant to approach the lectern to briefly introduce themselves. The first applicant is Eric Brown.
Great. And just so you know, we do have the benefit of the materials you provided as well, but it's compelling to hear, you know, if you have a particular reason or interest in serving on the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Brown, and I live at 1005 Northeast 98th Street. I'm a licensed general contractor. My, the name of my company is ROI Construction, and I've had numerous opportunities to present to planning and zoning boards throughout the state of Florida, and even had the opportunity once here to present to this, this board as well as a resident, and numerous times for, for different residents of Miami Shores as well. So, if appointed, I bring a very unique perspective, at least I think so. I've served on all sides except for the board. I've been a customer myself. I represent my clients as a general contractor, and locally here, I've presented to Broward, all of Miami Dade, and then a whole bunch of different municipalities. So, I bring that experience and that knowledge to this board, and I strongly ask for your, ask for your support, and I'd like to entertain any questions that you may have as well.
Counsel, any questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Brown, one quick question. How long have you lived in Miami Shores?
Just about 14 months.
And where were you before that?
Downtown Miami.
In Dade County?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Further questions? No? Thank you so much.
Next applicant is Wesley Castellanos.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mr. Benton, Councilwoman, Councilman, City Attorney, City Clerk. My name is Wesley Castellanos. I live at 875 Northeast 92nd Street. I am a registered architect. I'm a licensed general contractor, and I own my own architectural company and construction company. Overall, I have 14 years in Miami. You may hear from my accent that I'm actually born and raised in New York City. Good boy. Been there for many years, decided to live the dream and move south and live in Florida. I've been here 14 years, originally lived in Miami Beach, and then City of Miami, and now Miami Shores. I love the village tremendously. I believe I bring a lot of in-depth experience. I do a lot of presentations, I do a lot of diligent, very scrupulous review with the Planning and Zoning Board. So, I have, I've met with a few Planning and Zoning Boards from other cities and directors, and they feel I'm a good fit, and basically, I kindly request and humbly request a seat available because I believe that with my years of knowledge and being inside the architecture department of construction and development within many planning and zoning cities and villages, I believe I would bring a valuable asset to the city. Thank you very much. If I have any questions, please.
Great. I had one. I know C-30TS pretty well. How long were you there? When were you?
I was there, actually, I was there for six years.
Okay.
And basically, Dr. Brady and I actually met each other there, and he and I had a beautiful acquaintance to work together, develop together, but I was there for six years, and then I wanted to open up my own company, which has always been my dream, and that's why I have my own company.
It's Waze's fault. Okay, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? No? Okay. And it said in here, just, you've been a resident now for less than a year?
Yes.
Yes.
And I look forward to many more years.
Yeah, no, no, and that's awesome, and everybody has to start somewhere, so I don't, I don't prejudge that, but, but how many months approximately have you been here?
I moved, I purchased the property in December-
Okay.
-last year, so a little less than a year.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, to your point, it does not meet the residency requirement, but as stipulated in the code, to waive the residency requirement, a minimum vote of four-fifths is required.
Got it.
And you could do that once we vote, either through the casting of votes, or you can move, or someone can move to waive it, either way.
Yep. Okay. Great.
Next applicant, while David Covielos unable to attend, Stephen Doe. Next applicant, Cristiano Gross. Next applicant, Irene Hegidis.
Good evening, everybody. Irene Hegidis, 550 Northeast 102nd Street. First and foremost, I have to thank you for appointing me last, two years ago, to this board. It has been really an honor, so far, serving. Right now, as I was telling Mr. Brady, we have a board that is, it is really understand each other. I think things have changed considerably. I'm very interested, obviously, in pursuing, continue to do my civic duty and continue on the board. And in terms of my background, I'm an architect, 33 years of experience on fairly complex projects, national and international, in healthcare, but more importantly, was a zoning administrator for the City of Miami, and I did that for three years during the busiest time on the boom for the city, and also while we were implementing a brand-new base code, design base code, the first one in the world. After that, now I work with Miami Dade County, the Department of Transportation and Public Works, and the Chief of Transportation Enhancements, and my job really is to increase relationship and reduce congestion. I have several special projects that I'm working on. Maybe you have seen some articles. One of them is waterborne transportation, and the other one is the underline, which is the High Line in New York, but we're building it in Miami Dade County, which we're breaking ground coming soon. So, if you appoint me, I'll be honored. I understand that you would like to give opportunities to other residents to serve in the board. I frankly believe that the two years is not enough to really get a board major, but I'll understand perfectly, but I would love to be able to continue on this capacity.
Thank you so much, counsel. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Next applicant is Patrick Huber.
Patrick Huber, 1150 Northeast 100th Street. I just wanted to say I currently was serving on the Code Enforcement Board. It's been a true pleasure. I really enjoyed serving on that board. If you feel fit to put me back on it, or the Planning and Zoning, I'd be grateful, and I'll let my correspondence stand. Thank you.
Next applicant is David Snow.
Good evening, counsel. David Snow, property is located at 12 Northeast 101 Street. I've been a resident for nine years, and also served on the Planning and Zoning Board for two years, which, you know, two years goes fast, as busy as that board has been. And I would concur with my colleague Irene, that the current status of the board has had a tremendous nucleus, and really having great dialogue, discussion over very important issues that this community should, should value. So, I've been really appreciative of that experience. Just to give a little background on myself, I'm actually a city planner for the City of Miami. I've been with the City of Miami for almost 12 years. It's roughly 11 and a half right now. I've worked on big projects for the city, Miami Design District, the Wynwood Revitalization District, as well as various streetscape master plans, and also the revitalization of Marine Stadium and the Flux Park of Virginia Key. So, it gives you an idea of some of those planning initiatives.
Next applicant is Patrick Huber.
Patrick Huber, 1150 Northeast 100th Street. I just wanted to say I currently was serving on the code enforcement board. It's been a true pleasure. I really enjoyed serving on that board. If you feel fit to put me back on it, or the planning and zoning, I'd be grateful, and I'll let my correspondence stand. Thank you.
Next applicant is David Snow.
Good evening, counsel. David Snow, property is located at 12 Northeast 101st Street. I've been a resident for nine years, and also served on the planning and zoning board for two years. Which, you know, two years goes fast, as busy as that board has been. And I would concur with my colleague Irene, that the current status of the board has had a tremendous nucleus in really having great dialogue, discussion over very important issues that this community should, should value. So I've been really appreciative of that experience. Just to give a little background on myself, I'm actually a city planner for the city of Miami. I've been with the city of Miami for almost twelve years. It's roughly eleven and a half right now. Worked on big projects for the city, Miami Design District, the Wynwood Revitalization District, as well as various streetscape master plans, and also the revitalization of Marine Stadium and the Flux Park of Virginia Key. So it gives you an idea of some of those planning initiatives that I work as a profession. But, you know, taking those principles that I, foundations that I have from practice and applying it to the shores, I think is value to this community. Recently, in the two-year span that I was on the board, we were able to move the architectural design guidelines for Northeast Second, which I think all of you would understand that this tremendous value to, starting to give a facelift to this community, as well as a, the village comprehensive plan. This is, that's the backbone and the framework of this community. And our, our board was able to really dive in, give some really insightful feedback on staff's draft, and then move that recommendation to the council for their approval. So, you know, we also understand the future needs of this community that I would like to continue to be a part of for another two years, looking at potentially parks and open space master plan for this community. I think is an important thing that we highlighted in the comprehensive plan updates. New future resiliency policies. We understand that ceiling rise continues to impact our community, as well as our communities around us. We need to make sure that we're continuing to address those concerns as well. And of course, future development opportunities, not only on Second, but Biscayne Boulevard, I think, as well as Sixth, has opportunities for future development to really grow this community in the right direction. So again, thank you for allowing me to serve the last two years, and I'm looking forward to serving another two years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Any question, counsel? No? In my mind at least, the, and this is for Irene as well, the quality of, of materials that we've gotten back when we've asked for guidance from planning and zoning the last several years has been very, very helpful for us up here on the dais. So, however it works out tonight, we appreciate all your hard work. It's been appreciated.
So you will find your ballots in the upper right-hand corner with your respective names on it. So when you're ready, let me know. Thank you. The two selections are Irene Hegidis and David Snow.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna say this at the end of the meeting as well, but I do wanna say it for the benefit of the folks who are here and maybe are applying for the first time. One of the reasons we ask on the questionnaire is, have you applied before? Is because we want to give the people who persevere, who are persistent, who come back and ask again, who demonstrate a desire to serve, we wanna give them an opportunity. So, we appreciate everybody that stuck their neck out there and came out here. I know it's, it's, it's a tough thing, and we appreciate you offering to serve the community. So, thank you for being here tonight, and congratulations to the appointees.
Thank you. Next item is six B, appointments to the recreation advisory board. There are four vacancies with terms of two years. The first applicant is Anna Blackman, who is unable to attend tonight's meeting. The next applicant is Ron Morocco. Next applicant is Julian Montero. Jessica Pluhar.
Oh.
Oh.
Hi, I was outside, I'm Julian.
Okay, great, come on in.
Do I have to be inside or not?
Yeah, 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 perfect.
Thanks for the opportunity. Julian Montero at 465 Grand Concourse. I've been a resident for fifteen years. And thrilled to say that my boys have gone through pretty much every possible activity that the rec offers, from piano classes to all sorts of the sporting events, basketball, baseball, soccer. They're both in travel soccer, they're ten and twelve. We're active participants in the community. I believe the community center and the fields are just a wonderful place where the community can work together. I've met so many wonderful families, my children have made great friends, also active in the scouts. I've applied before, and I'd like to again try to be a part of the process. I think I've gone through pretty much most of the experiences that, that families that have used the rec in one way or another, whether it's aftercare or some of the other programs there. And as an active member of the, of the community, I'd also like to give some consideration for adult programs so that it's not just for children, but rather for the rest of us, so that we can also enjoy that facility and the program. So, again, thanks for listening to me, and cheers.
Terrific, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Great, thank you.
Next applicant is Jessica Pluhar.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Pluhar, 5 Northeast 105th Street. I am here because I want to do my civic duty and to be a part of the board for this community. I'm here on a couple different appointments. My main intention was to, is to apply for the Personnel Appeals Board, but I was encouraged to apply for other boards, just because I have a strong interest in, in being a part of, of the work that you do. A little bit about myself, I'm a certified human resource professional, the reason why I'm applying for the Personnel Appeals Board. Maybe I'll just, I'll get up here one time, so I don't get up here for multiple. You only have to hear from me once, but I'll just give you a little bit of background. I'm a certified human resource professional. I work, I manage the human resources department for a sports and music media company, which is founded by Mark Anthony. He has his headquarters just right down the, the street here, so I, I work locally. I'm a recent resident of Miami Shores. I moved here in February of this past year. My family has lived in Miami Shores for over, over ten years. I've been visiting them throughout that time. And when my husband and I moved here from New York a couple of years ago, we knew that this is where we wanted to settle down and build our family. We originally moved to Doral, and when the time was right and we found the home that we wanted to purchase, we moved to Miami Shores this, early this, this February. So I'm here because I wanna get involved in this community. I've known the community for many years. I love, I love what I've seen through, through my family. And, and in the eight months that I've been here, I've really, really enjoyed being here and living here. And I wanna be involved as much as possible. And I would like to be part of the Recreation Advisory Board, or the Fine Arts Board, or the Personnel Appeal, Appeals Board, whatever you think you would see my skills fitting, fitting best. I just also wanted to mention that I worked for, for AARP for over ten years. I was AARP's representative to the United Nations, and I worked with the World Health Organization. And we worked, I worked around the world getting the word out about the age-friendly cities. So I'm, you know, was surprised to see that on the agenda today, and I'm delighted that it's here. And I support, you know, I support that in any way. And if there's anything I can do to help with that initiative in the future, please feel free to call on me. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Counsel, any questions? No? Okay, great, thank you.
Next applicant is Karen Smith Gulaski.
Sorry, hi. My name is Karen Smith Gulaski. My address is 1351 Northeast 113rd Street. I've been a Miami Shores resident for almost fifteen years now. I served on the rec board for the past two years, where I tried to get improvements made to, for the recreation center, which means a new recreation center. What I'd like to do now, in the next couple of years, is work with you guys, as well as Angie, to try to modify the current existing property that we have, and to make the best use of the space we have in the community. I have two daughters, they're teenagers. When they were little, and into their teenage years, they use the recreation center a lot. I think it's an important spot for not only teenagers and young children, but also as I'm becoming part of the aging population, us too.
Great.
And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Next applicant is Elizabeth Lisa Sotier.
Hi, I'm Lisa Soder. I live at 141 Northeast 104th Street. I moved to the Shores three and a half years ago with my then-eleven-year-old, then-eight-year-old son, who's eleven years old right now. And we had been living in downtown. And while we liked downtown very much, as you know, there's not quite any competition to what the Shores can offer to families and children. And we have already taken full advantage of everything here. What we most especially love, though, are the recreation programs. We've become frequent flyers in all the sports leagues, the teams, the camps, and the community events. And I know my son, the memories and the friends that he's already made, even though we've only been here a short time, are gonna be a really important part of his childhood. And I, he asked me before I came here what I was gonna say tonight. And, and he said, tell them that you know Nate, because he thinks he's quite the celebrity over there. And, and they'll put you on. But I wanted to tell you a little bit about my background. My background is in special events management and marketing. And I have over twenty years' experience in managing large-scale and not-so-large-scale events across the US. I worked for Macy's Special Events for ten years. I was the regional southeast manager based in Atlanta for special events. So during that period, I handled the Olympic programming, Super Bowl programming for the stores in the Atlanta area during that time. I also reported into New York, so for ten years, I worked on the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade as well. From there, I worked as part of the startup marketing team for CarMax. I was in charge of all the grand openings across the country, as they moved from a startup company to a Fortune 500 company. And currently, I'm working for TomTom, the navigation company, which I hope that wasn't the direction you got, Mr. Zoff, on your way here. I do all the trade shows in the US for them. And I'm currently working on the Consumer Electronics Show, which is our largest event that we do globally as a company. And I manage a million-dollar budget for that event. I also have some community experience here in Miami. Right after I had my son for two years, I served as the marketing manager for Casa Valentina, which is a local charity, which helps young women who are transitioning from foster care out into the real world. So, I hope, I take great pride in the community that I live in. I think my skills and my background would be helpful on the Recreation Advisory Board. But I also, on a personal level, think that I would also benefit greatly from having a seat on the board. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Next applicant is Tuian Tu.
All right. So I think we will vote now. Yes.
I was thinking, to cry out for commercial messages.
Please.
And, and I would like to mention that, I just heard today, that Feeding South Florida is the recipient organization for any of your contributions that you'd like to make to Hurricane Michael disaster relief. And there's a big poster out front, and I know that the clerk will probably mention it at the end, or perhaps the mayor, but I, I did wanna draw your attention to the list that is going around, and was posted on Nextdoor also, for all the different items that they're looking for, for Hurricane Michael relief.
Thank you.
I could, or we could give the score of the Red Sox game.
So the new Recreation Advisory Board members are Anna Blackman, Julian Montero, Karen Smith Gulaski, and Lisa Soder.
Congratulations. And again, to reiterate, for those of you that weren't selected, please come back again. There's gonna be lots of opportunities.
Item six C, appointments to the Fine Arts Commission. There are three vacancies with terms of two years. First applicant is Joseph Clark. Next applicant is Carol Hoffman.
I'm Carol Hoffman. My husband, Roberto Guzman, and I moved here a little over two and a half years ago. We lived twenty-five years before in Miami Beach. I actually got my masters in theology at Berry, and I am an ordained minister in the Methodist Church. But my, what I've done is, in Miami Beach, I started a performing arts program called The Arts at St. John's. It was going on for fourteen years. I started it, I was the director, and it was very successful. Our underlying theme was using the arts to address social justice issues. And before that, in Denver, I was in the visual arts for many years. And all before that, in New Mexico. I'm an old lady, I have lots of experience. I, what I wanted to do by getting onto the Arts Commission, I've been to a couple meetings. What I wanted to do is give back to this community. I was so impressed when we moved here, how friendly people were. It's the friendly, it's much more friendly than anywhere else I've been in Miami. And I just wanted to give back in a way that would be beneficial. So, my, my, my specialties are marketing, social media, and grant writing. And plus, I know a lot of people in the arts community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next applicant is Susan Kelly. Jessica Pluhar. Bradford Smith.
Hi, my name is Brad Smith. I live at 46 Northwest 105th Street. I moved there in June of 2016. The reason I'm applying isn't just to help make Miami Shores even better-looking than it is through the arts. It's because the arts is something our community needs to help people go through a rough time. When I was sixteen, I lost my father in the World Trade Center, and I had a lot of emotions and feelings that I had a hard time dealing with. But through a documentary I worked on, Healing Power of Music, and then going on to study art in London, I was able to find expression through art that helped me cope and deal with that tragedy. And that's something I think is important to pass on, if we can, as a community, reach out through music and the arts to help people through hard times, and at the same time, make our community better, like many others.
new blood, and I like new blood on the council, but it's also something to say about consistency. I am currently in the process of contracting three bands for playing next January, February, and March at the Memorial Field and Recreation Field. We also have a fine, uh, an art gallery opening at the library this Friday, and I also want to quickly mention, uh, if you have not seen it yet, the great, the official opening of the Sculpture Park on ninety-second and second is going to be November eleventh, where everybody's invited to. I think it really adds a lot to the shore. It's really beautiful. And that's November eleventh, so I would really like the opportunity to continue serving on the board. Uh, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Next applicant is Vanessa Tartak.
Okay. Just a quick public service announcement. If you haven't gotten your flu shot yet, this year, this season's flu shots are available, and you can get them at Walgreens, and they accept cash and insurance. So I, in fact, got my flu shot there already, so.
Me too.
Heard immunity is a good thing. The more of us that get it, the safer we are, so.
It's true.
New applicants are Joseph Clark, Carol Hoffman, and Michael Stock.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And again, thank all of you for applying.
Next item is six D, appointments to the Country Club Advisory Board. There are three vacancies with terms of two years. The first applicant is Mark Gallo.
Uh, nine three three northeast ninety-ninth street. Been there for about twenty years. Uh, been a member of the Country Club for about fourteen years, and, uh, we've seen the demographics of this club change dramatically in the last, I'd say, five, six years. I don't know if anybody's noticed that or not, so we've been, the things that have been going on in that club have been amazing, uh, in terms of.
That's worse than what I was.
But, uh, that's okay. So the club has, has transformed amazingly in the last ten years or so. I mean, we've seen, we've seen the demo, like I said, demographics have changed. Uh, the club itself, the experience at the golf course, has drastically changed in terms of the value of it and actually the play of the course. So we have stepped up, you know, a lot, a lot of the members, a lot of new members, a lot of young members. Years ago, we'd have a, we'd have a member-member tournament, we'd have six guys there. Now we're having twenty. We're actually putting a, a handicap restriction on it, so you have to have a certain handicap to play. So we, you know, we're going forward with a, uh, we call it the Classic in December, where we're doing a tournament in terms of, um, you know, eight, eight to ten guys against eight to ten guys, actual members of the club. Years ago, we couldn't even get eight guys. So what we've been doing the last few years has been great. Um, in terms of care of the course, you know, we've had, uh, certain things going on in certain holes and things like that, like the second hole, there was issues with the drop hitting the water, and it's just to kind of get an idea what we had to do, we had, you know, they had to build something to stop it from, from overflowing, and then actually make it a better drop area for players. Uh, the club did that. Immediately, we brought that up in the advisory board, and immediately started working on those things. So we've done a lot as helping management kind of work, network through this, and it's been great. You know, we have issues, all kinds of issues, different, different small things. So we really want to keep this going myself. I like to continue to work with these guys and, uh, and hopefully bring some more to the club. And, um, you know, there's a lot of things, you know, internally in the club, we're doing a lot in the restaurants and things like that. So I like to continue on what I'm doing with that, with everybody. Uh, hope to have your vote. And if my wife was voting, she'd probably not vote me in, uh, because I probably spend a little more time there than I do at home. But, uh, in general, the club's a, it's a good place, it's really a, a nice spot for people. And if you see it lately, they've actually, you know, done a lot in the front of it as well, in the inside, the, uh, when you walk in the entrance. So they're really doing a lot of improvements in it slowly, but we push them, we definitely push them to get them to do a little bit more. But I thank for your time, thank you for your time, and, uh, you guys have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Next applicant is Cristiano Gross. Thomas Halloran.
Thank you. So my name's Thomas Halloran. I'm, uh, I live at four five one northeast ninety-first street, floor in Raisin, Miami Shores, so I went to San Jose, Lima, kind of been here forever. Um, I've had the opportunity throughout my time as a resident of the shores to kind of start off using all the facilities that are available. So from the tot lot, graduated to the community center for fun club, and now back as a professional, graduating to the country club. So I've kind of spent my entire life here in the village, you know, lived in Brickell. When I came back to South Florida, I'm currently employed at Merrill Lynch, I work in private banking. So spent a lot of time on the golf course, more often than not, kind of in Riviera, just as a consequence of geography where I work. Um, but I think I have kind of a unique background and kind of, I think, some opportunities that I see to be able to leverage the facilities that we have in a different way. Um, probably wouldn't notice, but I mean, I certainly don't, I, I'm not a golfer necessarily. I think that we can leverage the, you know, the resource that we have, um, for a lot of the new residents in the shores that are kind of a younger demographic, young families, that may not be looking to necessarily focus on golf facilities, but more as an entertainment destination. And certainly, I think that they do a great job as they're currently constructed. Really, my ultimate objective and why I'm here tonight is to hopefully bring kind of a contrasting voice, um, and be able to provide some, some unique insight from a different perspective of how we can leverage this kind of common resource for the, for the betterment of that community. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Next applicant is Martin Menes. And then Richard Raymond.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Richard Raymond. I, uh, been living in Miami Shores for the last sixteen years, and in the zip code for the last forty. Um, I have, I live in nine seventy northeast one hundred street, which to me is probably the best house to view the golf course in Miami Shores. I see the eighteenth green, I see the clubhouse, the first hole, and if I crammed my neck, I could see the seventeenth tee box. But, so I'm watching over the club all the time. Um, I really appreciate the time that you selected me for this last one. I think, from a perspective, I'm a civil engineer, and I, I kind of helping out the management, talking about drainage issues and, and working on the facilities of the club. And, and more importantly, I'm a new golfer. I just started about three years ago. I just worked a hundred, so I'm ready to go on for another term as, uh, on the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great.
We have a public service announcement from Mayor to make. I guess might as well be productive while we're between. About election day.
Oh, that's great. Yep. So, uh, we encourage everybody, uh, the, uh, November sixth general election is, um, right around the corner, and, uh, want to encourage, uh, all of us to get as familiar as possible, um, with the ballot, um, however you, whatever you decide to do. There is a, uh, there's a link on our website, but you can also, I think, access the Miami-Dade County website directly as well, um, that explains, it has a sample ballot so you can review, uh, in advan, it's a very lengthy ballot, so I've done absentee voting myself already, already mailed off and done. Um, but, uh, you can, uh, you can go online and at least read all about the, the various ballot initiatives, especially the constitutional amendments and the, the, the local county, um, charter questions. I mean, they are very, very confusing. So I encourage everybody to go online, it's nonpartisan, it's offered by Miami-Dade County, you can familiarize yourself with all of them, so. Some of them make no sense whatsoever. I mean, totally disparate subjects. I mean, the way they're able to pass muster on some of this stuff. And that's, that's, uh, that's an editorial, that's not public service.
The three new applicants are Mark Gallo, Thomas Halloran, and Martin Menes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item is six F. I'm sorry, I think I moved up too fast. Give me a moment here. Six E, appointments to the Code Enforcement Board. They have three vacancies. Now, this one has one-year term, one, one-year term expiring October twenty nineteen as a result of Ms. Bruce's resignation, and then you have two, three-year terms expiring October twenty twenty-one. So the way I thought we would handle this is we keep the one-year term, um, open for further, for anyone else who would like to serve one-year term. And then we have applicant Tom Curator.
Good evening, everyone. Tom Curator, eight sixty-seven northeast ninety-first terrace. Uh, thank you for considering me to the board. Um, I feel what I bring to the board is, um, a lot of experience, and I've been asked it to the board. I'm currently the Assistant Director of Co-Compliance to the City of Miami Beach. I know I haven't been a resident in Miami Shores for a long time. I was in Shawcris, so I got here now. But I, um, I'm not a resident for a long time, but I recognize the character, the quality of life, you know, and the fabric of the community that we need to keep. Thank you for your consideration.
Great. Thank you.
Next applicant is Patrick Huber.
Hi. Um, okay. So, uh, I'm going to take, uh, take a second. So I, I want to clarify because it was not altogether clear from, did you move August of this year?
Yes.
Into the shores, okay.
I was in Shawcris before.
Before that, okay.
I was in the city of Miami before that.
Okay.
Well, you would need at least four votes in order to waive the residency requirement.
Okay. Um, and if we don't have four votes, uh, because you can, you can effectively no vote, correct? And, and, and it would, we would just be going back out?
Correct.
And soliciting for two members as opposed to one?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify, um, something that the Councilman Maltz said several months ago when we were doing another appointment. He was talking about the possibility of re-advertising the entire.
Yep.
Board appointment schedule. And I just thought I'd throw that out there because, um, we have, we have that prerogative, and we're not, I'm never sure about the advertising part of this.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that, and that would definitely be an option for anybody on council that wanted to make a, a motion. We could sort of vote through and see what happened the first time. And, oh, Mr. Attorney, do you want to opine on that, or?
Unless I'm asked.
Okay. Yeah, wasn't sure if you had anything to interject on that. No? Okay. Um, okay. So, uh, I, I think it'd be my suggestion to, to maybe go through one time with the vote and see how it shakes out, and then if we don't, you know, then we'll re-advertise for however many seats are still out there. Yeah? Okay.
And that would also work, Mr. Mayor. As far as the code is concerned, the board members who currently serve on the Code Enforcement Board are to remain on the board until those seats are filled. So that wouldn't affect, um, the Code Enforcement Board in the meantime, with the exception of that one seat that we have in, in Ms. Bruce, uh, left vacant.
Okay.
had me covered.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
While the court is tabling, I'd just like to, um, I guess, reiterate to everyone that the Code Enforcement Board is a quasi-judicial board. It's one of the two quasi-judicial boards. It's a very, um, important board, and I would hope that those of you who have applied, those who you get on, understand, um, you know, that folks come to you with special circumstances sometimes, and, you know, they want to mitigate the violations on the property. It's not as much about squeezing them for as much money as we can get out of them for the village, uh, but bringing, you know, properties into compliance, because people do want to spend that money on improving the property as opposed to just giving the village a fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So Mr. Patrick Huber was appointed, or reappointed, and, uh, Mr. Curator is missing one more vote.
Okay. Um, listen, we appreciate you, uh, you have a very impressive resume, we would love for you to be involved, please reapply for boards. Thank you very much.
Okay, so the next one is six F, appointments to the Historic Preservation Board. There are two vacancies, uh, and they will serve a two-year term. The first applicant is Kristen Atzet. And there is Seth Bramson.
Well, I'm the newbie here. We, uh, only moved to Miami Beach seventy-two years ago, uh, and in December of eighty-one, we moved to the shores. And I have spent the equivalent of a lifetime of thirty-eight years here in the shores. Is that thirty-eight, Thomas? Did I get it right?
Pretty close.
Thank you. Uh, I am adjunct professor of history and historian residence at Barry University. I am adjunct professor of history at the Nova Southeastern University Lifelong Learning Institute. I am the company historian of the Florida East Coast Railway, the only person in the country who bears that official title with an American railroad. I am the senior collector of Florida East Coast Railway, Florida Transportation Memorabilia, Miami Memorabilia, and Floridiana in America. Our collection of Miami Shores memorabilia is the largest in private hands in the country. As some of you know, I wrote our history, which is titled Boulevard of Dreams, a pictorial history of El Portal, Biscayne Park, Miami Shores, and North Miami. I've written a good few articles about our wonderful village. Uh, we intend to stay here for a lifetime, and when you have the collection that we have, you can't move anyway. Uh, several years ago, I was fortunate enough to have served on the historic board, and now I am asking for your votes for reappointment. I love the village, I've been here a long time, I'm very familiar with the Shoreland Company, what it did, the principles involved, and most of the historic homes. So I do appreciate your consideration.
I actually, can I, um, Mr. Bramson, obviously I, I know you very well and, and your book and everything else. One question that I'm trying to work through is with the new ordinance as it relates to the Historic Preservation Board. Are, do you happen to be an architectural historian as well, or no? And that's not disqualifying, I'm just trying to.
No, no, I understand.
Check boxes, um, as far as what they're looking for.
The only way I can answer that, uh, Mr. Mayor, is to say to you that as part of what I have done.
Yeah.
In preserving historic Miami memorabilia, would be yes, the amount of architectural material and history. And while I have not taken any courses in architectural history, I would have to say to you that the material that we have, not just from Miami Shores, but from greater Miami, uh, I am, you brought it up, forgive me, it's not bragging, it's simply.
Yeah.
Stating the fact, I am America's single most published, note the disclaimer words, please, Florida history book author. Uh, Arcadia has just contacted me to do my thirty-second book. This will be my nineteenth with them.
Great.
And, uh, so I would have to say, to some extent, I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to check that box.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick comment, Kristen.
What, what? Come on up. And, and state your name into the record.
Uh, good evening. My name is Tiada Stavardis. I do on one zero zero five zero northeast twelfth avenue. I'm a current member of the board, and I just want to note that Kristen, that is, that she's not present here, she's out of, uh, state today, that's why she's, she's not That's why she's not here. And in the spirit that many other applicants said, it's a good thing to keep a little bit of continuity, because two years is not enough.
Okay.
So she didn't ask me to do that. It's just a coincidence.
Okay.
But I'm here.
Thank you.
Next applicant is Wesley Castellanos.
Yep. Yep.
Good evening again. If I may mention again, I'm a licensed architect. I do a lot of historic preservation. I'm originally from New York, as I mentioned, and I did a lot of historic preservation from New York, from the Flatiron area, Meatpacking District, Upper Eastern, Upper West Side, when I moved to Miami 14 years ago, mostly in Miami Beach. I do a lot of historic preservation in Miami Beach. You can see my website. You can see my credentials, Coral Gables, and I do understand the detail and intricacy of preserving it and the feasibility of what needs to be traded off when it does have to go through a certain compromise. So again, I feel that historic preservation would be a spectacular fit for me, because I do a lot of historic preservation in Miami, Miami Shores, City of Miami, Coral Gables, and I would love to be part of the board so I can maintain the beauty of the Mediterranean Revival, post-war, post-modern, Spanish colonial, as I did my own house. My own home was a revival of Spanish colonial architecture.
Great.
So I thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just have one sort of question for Mr. Castellanos. Do you do any work here on Miami Shores?
Other than my own home, no.
Okay. Because I don't know if that's a conflict. I would ask the attorney if Mr. Castellanos is sitting on the historic preservation board to represent homeowners here or anybody with respect. I wouldn't want to see him lose any business in that respect, but I think he's highly qualified.
I don't believe it's a disqualifying conflict from serving on the board, obviously, on a matter-by-matter basis, a conflict analysis.
Okay.
Could be advised.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a question as well, and I'll direct this to the attorney and/or the clerk. There are also non-voting special advisors?
Correct.
But those are not council-appointed? Those are appointed by the board? Or can the council recommend
I'm sure
Appointment of non-voting members if we wanted to? I mean, or can we appoint a non-voting member according to the ordinance?
I see no reason why you cannot appoint a non-voting member.
Okay. Okay.
Well, you know, in a lot of cities, they have electronic voting. By the way, I did serve on the historic preservation board.
That's fun.
Yeah, that was a fun board. I enjoyed that.
We have three very highly qualified candidates.
So due to Mr. Castellanos residency, him not meeting the residency requirement, he did not get the four votes. However, he was recommended or nominated as a non-voting member. That's an option. Mr. Bramson did receive the sufficient votes, so he is appointed. Now it's left up to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Did anybody else receive through the mayor to the court? Did anyone else... No one else received three votes, then?
Correct. That is correct.
I would suggest or make a motion, if necessary, that we revote?
Yep.
See if we can get a board vote then?
Yep.
So just to save time at the end of the meeting, I wanted to thank the police department very much for the walk-to-school day, walk-bike-to-school day. It was quite successful. It was... St. Rose definitely had the most students that were traveling on the roads, but I was pleased to see drivers take more... pay more attention to what was going on with students getting to school that morning. And I'm very appreciative of our police department, because not every department has the ability to be at three schools in one morning and usher the students there safely. So I wanted to thank them and encourage walking and biking to school. We are now in wait for our FDOT crosswalk that is going to go in on Sixth Avenue at 101 Street. We can't wait, but in the meantime, I think all of us join in asking all drivers to pay attention when students are coming to and from school. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations to Mr. Castellanos.
Congratulations. I'm going to make a motion to appoint Ms. Adsett as a special, non-voting special advisor to the board as well.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? No? I'll call the question. All those in favor of appointing her as a non-voting special advisor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Great.
Mr. Mayor, may I just make one very quick comment? Mr. Benton knows that we have a retiring police officer retiring in two to three weeks, Jack St. Thomas. And this has been, what, Tom, 40 years?
Close 30.
I don't know if we ever plan to do anything to say thank you to somebody like Jack, but hopefully.
Thank you. Thank you. And congratulations to everyone.
Item 6G, appointments to the personnel appeals board, two vacancies, two applicants, two-year terms, Patricia Gisbert and Jessica Pluhar.
Hi. Patricia Gisbert, 246 Northeast 100th Street. I currently serve on the board. It's a little bit different than most of the others. It only meets when necessary. In several years I've been on, we've met once. It's an incredibly important board, even though, you know, it doesn't get a lot of press or anything. So I would really appreciate being appointed and another term.
Great. Okay.
Congratulations to both Ms. Patricia Gisbert and Jessica Pluhar.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Next item is 6H, appointment to the general employees pension board. You only have one employee vacancy, one applicant, Angela Dorney.
Who is this Angela Dorney?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Next item is 7A, a resolution of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, supporting the World Health Organization's Age-Friendly Cities and Communities Program in approving the village's enrollment into the AARP Age-Friendly Communities Initiative, providing for transmittal, providing for authorization, and providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Councilwoman Alice Birch.
Councilwoman Birch?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So I want to thank Mr. Dan Brady for staying through to the end here until this item came up and for the reference material that he provided, which strengthens the case, I think. And I am hoping for council approval for, especially for the reason that this puts us into a network. And to be part of that network is important when people are making choices about where to live and about making choices about where to continue to live. You know, once you have this stress of a hurricane and you have owned a home for a number of years, somehow it seems even more challenging to meet all the needs that you have as an older person aging in place. And I've been very interested in this for the past couple of years, and this seems a good place to start, because as you see from the handout that Mr. Brady gave us, it is a process. But I would be pleased if Miami Shores could be a part of that process.
Great. Thank you. Counsel, any comments?
I think it's a wonderful initiative and proposal. Is there any cost to the village?
Not that I can think of. Unless we were to ask for a budget that might be a friendly meeting of seniors to chat about their concerns, which is a possibility, but not that... certainly not upfront.
I think this is a great initiative. We've talked about offerings, especially in the recreation center, for more offerings for our aging residents. And, you know, I think that it's almost like a sort of a first, like sort of comp plan, outline of a plan for addressing that community. And I thank both of you for bringing it forward. We'll support it.
Mr. Mayor? No, I completely agree. I think that this was something that, you know, in the last couple of campaigns that I participated in was, you know, a common theme that came up that people were concerned about. It's nice to see us take some concrete steps towards, you know, putting some stuff in place and getting some support for our own efforts for the senior community.
And I'd like to point out, with this one, we are out front pretty early on this. I mean, this is... There's not... There are some cities that have stepped up, but this is... I'm glad to be joining this effort early, because I think this is important. So I'm going to call the question unless you have anything else to add. No? Okay. Oh, we probably need a motion.
I'd like to move that we support the resolution.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Call the question now. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
Item 7B, a resolution of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, expressing the village's opposition to offshore drilling activities, including seismic air gun blasting, providing for transmittal, providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Sean Brady.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor.
So I know, you know, as a council, we have tried to really focus on things that are, you know, concrete and have a direct, you know, positive impact on our community. I absolutely see this as an issue that, especially in the state of Florida, has, you know, broad bipartisan support. This is not something that really pits Floridians against each other in any way. This is something that, you know, here in Florida, we have for many years recognized that the risks far outweigh the benefits to our, you know, to our state. And because of that, I thought it was to be important to, you know, represent the views and the interests of the people in Miami Shores, to join the other municipalities in the state who have, you know, basically also adopted this resolution by us adopting this resolution and making it clear that, you know, especially to help give any, you know, future or current, you know, administration in Tallahassee the understanding that they have support from the communities that make up the state. I thought it'd be very important for us to also sign on to this resolution. And that was my reason for bringing it forward.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to add, I mean, as a coastal city, I mean, we would be directly threatened as a result of any, you know, oil spills and leakage. I know there's a barrier island between us, but it directly affects the water quality of the bay, right offshore potentially could. And I do see a real nexus. I generally want to handle stuff that directly affects the village. But I agree, I think that this is something that directly affects us. And when you... We heard the young lady speak earlier about the direct economic impact of this as well. You know, I know for a fact that there are a lot of people in this village that, you know, work in industries that rely on clean and safe water resources in our bay and offshore in the ocean. And, you know, to me, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I actually would even... I know that this is probably a model that they have given us, but, you know, I would like to consider adding a whereas clause that says, whereas as a coastal city, we are directly threatened as a result of such oil spills and leakage, and add that, you know, directly after that whereas clause that deals with that. So if there's traction on this, maybe we'll take that up as a possible friendly amendment. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm perplexed. Inasmuch as I personally support it 100%, cannot disagree with one speck of what you've all said, but the representative for the program, I've reviewed all the materials. I'm semi-read as an individual, and I get it. However, as I've previously stated, I don't feel the role of a council is to put forth such type of resolutions on social causes. Where does it start? Where does it end? Next week, there are some very, you know, endangered tree frogs that need our help. There are some, you know, there's other, you know, seismic or environmental issues which I personally support also. I just don't think it's the role of this, and I don't think it's what our residents elected us to do. And I say this, you know, and you know, I mean this in the most respectable, professional, and supportive way. We've had this issue last year when somebody brought forth something about sending... joining the Western Initiative for Gun Control. I think there was something else, and I have been absolutely steadfast in my position is that the Miami Shores Village Council should not get involved in social causes. I mean, you want to do something here within the Shores? If you want, if there's a piece of property that needs our protection and our help, I'll be out there with a shovel and a hard hat, or whatever you need. I will be there, and I will get the support of our community. I just don't think that this is our role. And as much as I personally support it, I cannot support it as a member of the council. And I apologize.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Mayor? First of all, I'd like to direct the court to record me as a yes vote on item 7.
8?
A.
So noted.
That we just heard. With respect to this item, you know, quite frankly, I couldn't agree with Councilman Meltz more. I made pledges to the constituents who voted for me that, sitting up here, we would vote for items that deal with the business of Miami Shores Village and not with general social issues and business. Again, you know, my personal position and my feelings and things of that nature, you know, don't come things of that nature, you know, don't come into play here. So, again, I'm not going to vote for this solely because of the fact that it doesn't affect the business of the village of Miami Shores. And I would ask, you know, my colleagues here, you know, not to continue to bring up items that don't have to do with the village, the business of the village of Miami Shores. It's not our place, it's not our mission as elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor, yep.
I have actually been very, you know, wanted to be very careful to not bring up things that would be, you know, polarizing or that are, you know, based on opinion or that would not in some way directly impact our village. But I do feel that this is something that would directly impact, you know, tax receipts for the state if we had a problem, would directly impact quality of life and property values here in our village if we had a problem. And it's, you know, really not something that there is much debate about in our state about, you know, or within, you know, the people here in South Florida. Or, you know, success of Republican administrations in Tallahassee have also been, you know, very much against allowing offshore drilling because of these very reasons. So, I just, you know, I just wanted to be clear that I understand where you guys are coming from, and that that was absolutely not my intention in bringing this up. That I'm really trying to look out for the, you know, for the future and the safety of our community. And that was my reason for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilman?
I would just like to say, relative to the issue of bringing up things that are social issues, this is really an environmental issue, has been problematic for, I would say, a period of about six years, back about two or three years ago, and for six years back from then. And I've seen it come up over and over again, that we do need to draw the line. I do respect the Vice Mayor in that I know him as an environmentalist, and I appreciate that. And I myself am a scuba diver. I did my first scuba diving in the Gulf of Mexico this year for the very first time. I realize the fragility of that environment as well as our own Biscayne Bay. And I would make an exception in this case because I feel that it is something that, with a stretch, you can say that if you're saying for true that when you drill, you spill, then there's no way that our waterways would be free of whatever offshore spill would happen. So, I could take that stretch for Vice Mayor Brady, and I know that he has been careful in that regard. So, thank you.
So, and just to reiterate, and to the point of what is the nexus with Miami Shores, because, you know, I've said as well that I want, if we're going to do something like this, that there has to be a connection. That I would propose a friendly amendment as described that says, whereas as a coastal city, we are directly threatened as a result of any such oil spills and leakage.
Mr. Mayor, I would fully support that amendment.
Okay, so, do you want to make a motion on this, maybe as amended?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the resolution as amended.
Okay. I'll second it. So, we have a motion and a second. I think we know where everybody is on this. Any further discussion, or you want to take a vote, call a question? I will call the question. All those in favor of the resolution as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Resolution passes.
Item 8A, sewer system project update by the village manager.
We have no new sewer issues to report tonight.
Item 8B.
Well done.
For 20 years, you learn, right?
They're not going to take that plaque back.
New village website report by the village manager, requested by Councilman Jonathan Melz.
Can I introduce this quickly, Mr. Benton?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so, and, very nice. Let's rewind. Mr. Brady and I were campaigning a couple of years ago, and I remember specifically, we talked extensively about website, website. It hit me like an anvil in an old Warner Brothers cartoon the other day, is that we don't have a new website, right? It's been almost two years. So, as a testimony to Mr. Benton, I called him, I said, "Tom, we got to do something about this website. What's going on here?" And he said, "Well, I'm glad you asked. Staff's been working on it." And I said, "Well, you know, great, let's put it on the agenda." So, here we are. So, let's see what's going on.
View.
Now, there you are.
View.
So, for those of you who don't know, I'm Lisa Keely, I'm the Communications Manager and also the Assistant to Mr. Benton. And while I have been working on this process, the idea is to, this is what our web designer came up with. We've been with the save web designer since 2011 when we initiated the old, the current website. And in that process, we've kept him on with a maintenance agreement. And in order to keep costs low, the hours that we haven't used in our monthly maintenance agreement, they've agreed to roll into redesigning the website. So, the first time they did that, they did a good job. The benefit to this, and what I've found in the past, is a lot of cities have a cookie cutter website. And our website really isn't a cookie cutter. We are allowed to do a lot of things that a lot of the other websites can't because, an example is during Hurricane Irma, we created a form really quick for anybody who was vacating their home that would notify the police department so that in the event we were hit with the stronger hurricane, they would know which homes were vacant. So, those are things that we can do more on the fly with the web designer rather than a cookie cutter. So, we've taken, basically, the information we have on our current website, which is, a lot of it is stagnant, and I've been doing some analytic work, and the things that are not as prevalent to people and not as interesting, we're going to be removing. But in the process, just to show you the idea of what we're looking at doing, this is the concept. It's a one-page landing page. And you can toggle here just to get to the side. So, everything is pretty much right here on the screen. I know some of the buttons and things you'd like to, like, make more streamlined, like the minutes, as far as finding those. Isabella and I have been speaking a lot about that process, and we are going to create a button here that would take you to a minutes page. For the departments, the boards where the minutes are, planning and zoning, for instance, would look like this. So, it's a little more compact, and you can see the agendas, and the minutes are here as well. We have a how-do-I button, so you can, this actually takes you to FPL. So, it's a direct link to FPL because you can report your streetlight out that way. So, all of our links, you know, we'll ensure that those are still working because a lot of times they do change with the outside companies that we link people to. You guys are here. So, that's the officials' page. We would add your names, of course. Oh, there they are.
Oh, boy.
When you scroll over, there you are. So, it's a little more compact, a little easier, you don't have to scroll down and keep scrolling to get to a lot of the information. And forms, we do have a lot of forms that we use, especially in the building department. But the building department, as you had requested, just did their upgrade to the new software that will allow for a portal with online submissions for permits. It's a great system. We're still working through some kinks. We actually just did the upgrade about two weeks ago. So, they are still working out some of the kinks, and we'll go live with it completely within the next month or so. So, that'll be available on the current website, and we'll integrate it into the new one as well.
Okay, so you'll be able to link into it through.
Yep. Yep. So, this is the concept, and what we wanted to do, Mr. Benton, wanted to show you, if you're okay with this concept, we can move forward. In the process, like I said, we're going to eliminate a lot of the old information and update it. So, it's simple and easy to read, and hopefully you can find things a lot easier. And in the website design team, would take about two to three months to get everything up and running and integrate everything into the new site.
Great. Counselor?
Go back to the homepage, the landing page for a second.
And let's just toggle the utilities here. Any of these boxes, we can make them be whatever you'd like. Here, I would like to start doing announcements. So, like, when Unity Day comes, or, you know, our events, we have a spectacular Halloween at the pool that's coming up. We could put them here, and they would scroll through, like, you know, or pictures of an event, whatever.
Okay, three quick things. Number one, so are you saying on the homepage, it's a dual page?
It's just a.
You have to run to the right or not?
You don't have to. This is just links, like, so for instance, we're required to put the flood information, the budget, and title six information on the homepage.
Okay.
So, you don't have to have that. We could probably put it somewhere else. But those are required things, and some of the big projects that we do, we try to have those on the first page.
Because I'm just concerned how it's going to appear mobile, right? If you're having a dual screen as your landing page, a lot of people are going to be looking at this on the phone. I just want to make sure you all take that into account, right? You don't want it, like, falling out or clumsy or anything. Is there a different mobile version?
It probably won't have the dual page like our mobile version now, just has the dropdown menus. And I'm, that kind of is the next step, once we get this approved.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, this is, that's part of my question too, Councilman Melz, is that I think we're looking for a little more agility in the mobile site. Because I think I have it in common with others that we just flipped to the full site from the time we're using a tablet or something, rather than to try to struggle through and really find what we want quickly on the mobile site.
Yeah, and that's one of the things with the menus, I think, we can streamline as well, so that on the dropdown, it's, you know, some of those things are easier.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First of all, I would like to thank Elizabeth. I mean, this is like a major upgrade, and it's fantastic and amazing what's being done. I just, I don't want folks to forget that we have the My MSV app for mobile devices that you can download from the App Store, which is something that we instituted, I think, in the last administration, which has a lot of the information that you would find on the website, including reporting, you know, down, you know, lights that are out and things like that, that you can just do on the app itself.
And it's really good for input.
Yes, you can input information on the app that's recorded by the village. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You know, one thing that I just want to make sure is captured, and I think that maybe there's a way for, maybe we can request some time to sit down and look at specifics of this and make recommendations to you, when not everybody's held up. But, you know, there's certain documents that are just very hard to find or not on the website. And I'm not sure if that's really a matter of website organization or the way the content's getting on there. Like, I had a resident come to me yesterday saying, "I can't find the map of the bike ways in the shores anywhere on the website. Can you please ask them to put it up there?" And I said, "Well, I think it's there." But that's the thing, there's these key documents. Like, I've gone on looking for studies that we've done in the last two or four years. I can't find them. You know, it's, so, I think it's a question of organization for me, for some of this. And I just want to make sure that that's something that you guys are thinking about.
So, some of the items are also by retention. So, those are things that would also, like, fall under the clerk as far as retaining some of those, because we actually don't have to retain all of those.
Yep.
Documents. And because this is more of an active, you know, in the moment.
Yep.
But if that's what you would like us to have, there are compliance items that have to be addressed when we have all of the documents online.
Okay.
So, there's levels of what we can put online, and it's very expensive because all those documents do have to follow the regulations that we have to follow with compliance.
Okay.
So, at the moment, my suggestion is to get the website active and then see the documents that we really find are useful to the residents. Because we do have a lot of stagnant documents that are on here that we don't want to convert, unfortunately. And with those regulations, we have to.
Well, it'd be great, maybe, as an alternative, a third way on this, is to have a list or a short description of a lot of these key documents. And if they wanted to request them from the clerk, you know, that there's like a one-click or something like that where they could say, "I would like to see your walkability study, you know, or bikeability study. I found it right there." Yeah, mobility, whatever.
Multi-mold.
Multi-mold. Your downtown redevelopment study, whatever it may be, and be able to see it in the library and click to request it, you know? Yep. Anyway, that's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, first of all, I want to say thank you, Councilman Melz, for asking for this update. I know it's something that staff's been working on, but it's really nice to see it, and so thank you very much. So, the only thing I was wondering, are we using any kind of, like, any analytics, like a Google Analytics or anything that lets you?
I do have it linked.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, that way, that should help identify any long paths. Okay, great, thank you.
And I would like to very much make a special request, that given your background, something we've talked about, that you sit down and look at this as well, and please give.
I will.
We'd be much appreciated.
Yes, Councilman, sir.
Thank you. But I do, I am curious, there was something I was looking forward to working on or proposing, and I see a link down the bottom, the pet lost and found. Do we have that active now?
So, it's active, but I can tell you, it's probably been a year and a half since anyone's posted on there because everybody uses Nextdoor because it's more immediate. And people who lost their dog or found a dog post it almost instantaneously because they take a picture and it's there. And the police department also has a Facebook page that they have, it's Pooches in the Shores, I believe is the name of it, that they post dogs that are dropped off or found at the police station that aren't chipped. They do hold them for a period of time. And with the network and the community, I think those are the two resources that really are more favorable. It's a lot to come here and upload a picture, and, you know, when you've got Nextdoor and you just hear it is in the zip. So.
Yeah, as long as our police officials are monitoring Nextdoor, and when somebody calls them about a dog and we're all on the same page, then it may not be necessary.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Looks terrific. Any other questions?
And please, if you have any feedback at any time, you have my email, so please let me know as I'm going along, you know, if I can do anything that you come across. And we have it incorporated.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Thank you.
Nice job.
Item nine, announcements. The Fine Arts Commission will be hosting an open reception featuring artist Pamela Gonzalez at Brockway Memorial Library on Friday, October 19th, 2018, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Miami Shores Police Department is taking back unwanted prescription drugs on October 22nd, sorry, 27th, at Miami Shores Police Station from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Join the Aquatic Center for Shores Halloween's spectacular night of games and activities on October 27th from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM. The event is for children ages nine and younger. The Greater Miami Shores Chamber of Commerce will be hosting Green Day on November 3rd, 2018, from 3:30 PM to 7:30 PM. The next meeting of the village council will be held at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, November 6th, 2018. And please remember to visit the village website for more information on village events, departments, and to sign up to receive agenda notifications. Item 10, village council comments.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one more announcement before we, and Ms. Birch touched on it. We have launched today a hurricane relief effort for the folks that were impacted in Panhandle. We're working with Feeding South Florida. We've put boxes in all of our municipal buildings, the community center, aquatic center, fieldhouse, village hall, library, and at the police station. We're specifically looking for personal hygiene items, diapers, cleaning supplies, pop-top canned meats, peanut butter, cereal, and instant soup mixes are what the, what has been requested. So, if any of our residents could drop that off, we will make sure that it gets to the Feeding South Florida, and they will get it trucked up to the hurricane victims up there and offer them relief.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments? Okay, we don't have to. I want to say just a couple of quick things. First of all, thank you, everybody who applied tonight, who came out. Again, if you didn't get selected, please apply again. You know, we appreciate your interest in serving the community, and we're grateful to those that are selected, and we know that you'll serve the community with integrity and dignity. I also wanted to take a second and thank the manager and Chief Liestat and the fine men and women of Miami Shores Police Department and the ATF for the work that they did. I don't know if you guys, I'm sure most of you have heard, at the motel on Biscayne Boulevard, which was a scourge.
which was a scourge for our residents for many years. It was one of the first things that really popped onto my radar the first time I ran. And I'm very, very glad that they stepped up and really solved that problem. And I know that there's a lot of relief for the residents as well, so. And finally, we're about a month away. First farmer's market is November 11th. Let's start thinking about it now. It's going to be a lot of fun. It's a great time of year. With that, thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.